All right, let me make a motion, you call the meeting to order. We can just call the meeting to order.
Done.
Why don't we do that? Skip all that motion.
Motion.
Stuff. I'm just gonna go right down the agenda tonight.
Do we have Will on Zoom?
Do we have Mr. Dai on Zoom?
Yeah, we should have Bill Dai was gonna dial in. Is he, is he on the, on the network?
We need to be able to see and hear him.
He isn't. He's recovering from a new rotator, a new rotator cuff. He's longing down. So, yeah, just, just for, for the record, Mr. Dai had surgery about a week ago or so in the city, is recovering. I understand that, that surgery counts as a legitimate excuse, so he will be listening in and will be able to vote tonight, even though he's not here in person.
Excellent.
He, yes, he is able to vote this evening. Right, you can see that. Hey, Bill.
Hi.
Hi. All right, so we're gonna, now we're all here, we're gonna call the meeting to order, and I am gonna start, Mr. Bennett, with Cona Merah, I assume that's you.
Thanks. This is an application, this is my friend and client Deborah, Deborah Hurst's house on First Neck Lane, and her house is on a parcel that doesn't conform with zoning, but she's also controls this lot, one of the lots on the Wyman subdivision, to the, that's the east of her.
East.
Thank you. So, it only makes sense to steal a bit from this lot, to make the, her house lot more conforming. So, we are, would be significantly decreasing the degree of non-conformity of her house lot that fronts on First Neck Lane by taking it from the flag lot that she owns as part of that Wyman subdivision. The Wyman subdivision is, you're probably most familiar with it when you drive down Pond Lane. It's up on the, to the west and elevated. So, why are we here? We're ask you, asking for your support in the zoning board of appeals, because they'll no doubt refer it to you for your comment. There's something really important that you have to understand here. This is an existing flagpole lot. This was a flagpole lot that was put on the subdivision, on the Wyman subdivision. It has fee access off of First Neck Lane. It's not via easement, I know everyone seems to get upset about that, although we've been doing that for years, but it has actual fee into the, into the, into the, the area. The east lot. So, why am I before the zoning board of appeals if the flagpole exists? Well, the village trustees, in their wisdom, to try to make it harder to create new flaglots, new flaglots, laid in some additional requirements for flaglots. They have to be certain, they have to be bigger than certain subdivision, they have to be bigger than standard lots, you know, if they were, if they were full frontage of flaglots. And my whole pitch to you and to the zoning board of appeals, which I think is correct, both, you know, from a historic point of view, from a reasonable point of view, from an intellectual point of view, from a character, impact on the character of the neighborhood, is that this lot already exists as a flaglot, that the additional restrictions on creation of flaglots were for the creation of new flaglots, and that's the only relief we need from the zoning board of appeals. Because if we were creating a new flaglot, we'd have to have 150, 150,000 square feet. Here we have about 120,000 square feet. But again, this flaglot exists, it exists. And those, if you look back at the legislative history and anybody who was at the public hearings and the planning board's comments on it, the whole idea with creating larger restrictions, more restrictions for flaglots, because no one can take this away as a flaglot, it is what it is and always will be, it's a separate lot, was to inhibit the creation of new flaglots. I already have one. And the great benefit is now I'm taking this area and making, if, by marrying this square foot footage to Ms. Hurst's house lot, I'm making that lot, the First Neck Lane lot, much less non-conforming. So, I don't really want any action from you tonight, but I wanted to be able, no doubt the planning, the zoning board of appeals will refer this to you for your comment, which is what they typically would do on this, so I'm just making my pitch to you to hopefully give me a, 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 a smile and understanding why we're with this, supporting me in the zoning board.
The ARB has taken our jurisdiction, which historically we had over the pole portion of flaglots.
The ARB?
The ARB has jurisdiction over the pole. We no longer have the pole.
I never would have drafted that, but.
That was changed.
C'est la guerre, huh?
It was changed, it was changed three years ago.
Yeah, that makes no sense to me, you're the planning board, but, you know, whatever. So, that's all I'm, I'm just asking for. If they, when they refer it to you, I wanted to give you the pitch of this is an existing flaglot, that new set of regulations was laid in to inhibit the creation of additional flaglots in the village.
John, do you have a site plan with you?
Oh, yeah, sure.
We don't have it in our files, so that was, now, love to see what you're talking about.
Only because there was, there was. You know, there was nothing new to distribute, you should have had the original application. It was, it was many months, many months ago.
It was over a year, it was over a year ago, it was a year and a half ago.
So, there's her house lot.
Can we get that on the?
This is existing. And this is the area patch that would be grafted onto this lot to make it much more conforming, and that would be the resultant configuration. Existing configuration, resulting configuration, highlighting the amount of area that would be transferred to the house lot.
Can you slide that mic?
Excuse me?
Can you slide the mic?
To your left.
To my left?
No, no, so he can hear you.
You wanna hear me? Yeah, so that, that's, it hasn't changed since it was first filed.
Yeah, any, any questions for John, Mr. Bennett? I, I have a couple. So, if I understand what you said correctly, your view is that the zoning board simply needs to approve this newly configured flaglot. Is that correct?
Well, they would need to give me some relief because it doesn't comply with the new air, area requirements for, for a flaglot. This flaglot that exists doesn't comply with the new area requirements that would be required for a flaglot if one were to create, create a new.
Even after it's expanded, it does not comply?
Particularly because it complies now, but we're taking it away. We're taking, yes, even after it's expanded.
Yes, okay.
You're making the front lot bigger.
Making, but I'm making the front lot bigger.
Yeah.
And much more conforming.
Right.
So, to me, the things that you struggle with, density, access, it's really nothing that would suggest that this shouldn't happen. Why, why, you know, what do you do? Sometimes when people come in and ask for variances to create flaglots, they're asking for variances to create a flaglot. This flaglot already exists on the filed subdivision map.
And, and it's been a while.
No, 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 of course.
The, the flaglot is how many square feet?
The flaglot now is 155,657.
And the front lot is?
And the front lot is, it's a builder's acre, 40,000 square feet.
And this is our, Ford, this is our 80 over there, right?
It's our 120.
120, that's right.
All right, so what we have, what we have now is one conforming lot and one currently existing is one conforming lot and one non-conforming lot.
Yes, one greatly non-conforming.
And what we would end up with, if this goes through, is two non-conforming lots.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I just wanna make sure I understand that correctly.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay. It is unofficial, but I think this motivation to deal with this property is because if it's gonna become, if for some reason it becomes a garden, all that, all the part, the former Wyman stuff, which is now privately owned and was gonna become a garden, the owner wants to have two lots where she can defend himself against the deer. You mean if the, the garden? If you're next to the garden? The Lake Agawam Garden, or Park. Yeah, there are people worried about deers in the garden, that's a separate topic. You wanna protect yourself, you wanna have protection from your private property against the deer. Okay. If you're, if you're living next to Central Park, you need an extra policeman. Yeah, I, I understand that, I mean, first and foremost, this is a variance issue, right? So, if you get your variance, come on back.
Yeah, but they're probably gonna send it to you for your thoughts, the ZBA. Because I have to come back, it's a lot line modification, too. It is a lot line.
They, they may, they're, they're not required to, but they can.
Jurisdictionally, it's a change of laws. So, they come back to us and ask us what we think, and they, but you'd still need a variance, right?
Yes, oh god, yes, yeah.
Will ZBA handle the secret?
It's a type 2 action, so.
It's type 2, okay, cool.
All right, understood.
But, yeah, I, I was, I still need a lot line modification from both you and from the health department.
And how much, under the new flaglot requirements, the expanded flaglot misses by how much, how many square?
About somewhere between 20 and 30,000 square feet.
Okay. Yeah, cuz one.
Remember, they did that to make it more difficult to create flaglots.
I was just curious how much.
This, this, this one exists.
Yeah, how much it missed by, but it's, you know, 20%.
Yeah, but you're forgetting about the fact that.
I'm still smiling, John, I'm still smiling.
Okay, I'll shut up.
All right. You, all you wanted was a smile, and we're smiling, so.
That's always good.
I understand, thank you.
And again, but if they ask you for a, a review, I'd ask you to be supportive of it. If they don't, I'll be back here after the variance, God willing, ask you to approve the lot line modification.
Got it, okay, thank you. North Main, I imagine we're gonna adjourn that?
Uh, yes, should we adjourn this to the next meeting, John, at March 3rd is the, the next date? Does that give you enough time, or should we push it out farther? John?
Fifty?
Just, no, I just, I know, before we move on from Cona Merah, I just wanted, so we can prepare our next agenda accordingly.
Got it.
Who's counsel for 54?
So, John, on 54, I'm, I'm sorry, on Cona Merah, do you want us to adjourn this, or how do you want us to handle?
And it, the next meeting is March 3rd, does that give you enough time, or do you wanna push it further?
I guess I'm before the ZBA, I don't know. I'll just put it on for a control date.
March 17th, I think.
You can just put a letter adjourned in if you need to.
Yeah, yeah, March 17th?
Is the following meeting, yeah.
Yeah, put it on for March 17th.
So, motion to adjourn Cona Merah till March 17th. 17th. Move, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes, and so the next application at 54 North Main Street, the counsel for the applicant told me that they're, so waiting for some updated surveys, that they could not have in time for this meeting, and asked for an adjournment.
To?
Um, I think.
March 3rd?
Uh, I think they'll be probably ready by the next meeting, March 3rd.
So, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn 54 North Main Street to our March 3rd meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, yeah, 560 Witka Pog.
We're here.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're, you're on again.
Okay, great, let me put that away. So, we'd like to mention, we're, we're here ready to talk about everything that's in that H2M memo. Rick Wasnovsky is here from, uh, by the way, I'm John Bennett, Bennett Reed for the applicant. Rick and Andrew Fowler are here, the owners, Rick Wasnovsky from Reiner Group is here. I, I will say that it was discouraging to get this H2M memo that was dated January 30th, that's last Thursday, was sent to our office at 4:35, but we worked quickly, and we're sharp, and we're focused, so we're ready to talk about it. And we sent to our office at 4:35, which is, as you know, less than an hour before the scheduled meeting, but we were, because we are also very astute, we did pick it up at the Dropbox at around 12. But I, I don't think it's appropriate for a January 30th memo to be uploaded to a Dropbox. What's today, February 3rd? But we're ready to talk about it. So, we, we would only ask that a memo be dated accurately as, to result, as, as when it's going to be made public, and that clearly it be sent to the applicant and not wait until, rely on the applicant to be, which we do anyway, but looking through this Dropbox, this January 30th memo, sent to me 4:35, I already had it, which was sort of a little bit of a rubbing in the salt, which is fine, we already had it, we're prepared to talk about it. We were before the board, or a few months ago, with the sketch plan approval, it's a seven lot subdivision with ag reserve. I think it's something, and you'll see in our comments to the, the H2M report, I think maybe, in all fairness to H2M, they weren't involved in the process, in the sketch plan process, but I think one of the things conceptually is people are missing, is that this is, the proposal is to have this a phased subdivision, which is why you have road reverts, which is why you show the road as to be built in separate stages, and the whole idea for that is so that the farming can continue as long as possible. Remember, we had originally suggested flaglots so that that sort of thing could happen, so that the farming could happen, and the subdivision be approved. The board was uncomfortable for that, so we do have a road with a cul-de-sac that terminates, but then we have reverts, so that on a second phase, the, 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 the road will be extended. I think, I, I think that the, the memo doesn't quite understand that, but we can talk about that, and I'm glad H2M is here. Again, this was a 28-acre parcel capable of a 12-lot yield, significant reduction in density, all lots very in excess of the 80,000 square foot requirement, and consistent with the plans presented and approved. During the sketch plan, the applicant is proposing to preserve 25% of the subject property, or 309,576 square feet. In addition, we have wetlands buffers, we'll talk about that a little bit, because I think someone's misreading the village code, but we'll talk about that. So, we have 11 acres of this, of this approximately 28-acre parcel will be open space. And in addition to that, parcels 3 to 7 have a total of 176,478 square feet, over four acres of buffers. Most of the stuff that I saw in this application draft is either there on the subdivision application and the maps, which I'll point out to you, or it can be the sort of stuff that you typically look at, at final approval. So, I think that this application is more than sufficient. We worked really, really hard on it, as Reiner Group always does, to be scheduled for a public hearing. Let's, let's have the public tell you what they think about the plan. I think it's more than complete enough, it certainly, it certainly meets with all the requirements, and to the extent that they aren't, they're just little nits that can be usually taken care of on the final subdivision. You have a memorandum from H2M, I see H2M is here. I have responses to it, but maybe the, the better flow is to have H2M present. Not that I'm telling you how to treat your, your agenda, but if you don't want them to present, I, I just wanna rely on their written comments. I certainly have quite a few comments based upon my rather quick but thorough review of these, of this.
So, couple, couple of things. One, appreciate your comments about when this appeared in Dropbox, but I don't wanna start keeping score, because.
That's okay, I just wanted to mention it, I don't need to talk about it.
You know, we're getting things from you and people you represented for.
Well, I never, I never date them five days before they're available.
I don't wanna start keeping score. It was, you know, we got it to you when it was done, I think the date issue is a good point, because it was just released this morning, right? There were still some drafting issues, but we wanted to get it to you. At least so we'd have constructive comments.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number one. Number two, I would like H2M to respond, but at this point, I like to keep it very high level and not get too much into the details, cuz you're right, a lot of these are little detail things that we can work out, but keep it very high level, unless the question.
I can run through this stuff very quickly, a lot of this stuff is stuff that somebody must have missed.
Well, so the biggest question that we had.
Right.
And H2M pointed this out, was the site plan in this version was different than the site plan, the sketch plan that we approved, and that, that's where most of the confusion. The phase 1, phase 2 aspect of it.
That's always been on the table.
If I can interject?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's always been on the table.
The, so the, not as much of the phase 1, phase 2, but as the site plan is actually drawn, where it's showing that the lot lines will be, and I do have, I did put a colorized version, sketching.
Yeah, I read it.
Where the lot lines are, I have it on my screen currently. It is reverting back to what I understand was an older submission, I wasn't here when that submission happened, but it does not match the sketch plan. So, in the sketch plan that was approved, you do resolve the issue of having landlocked lots, but in the plan that I was given to review as the current submission for preliminary approval, it, it reverts to the old condition, and the lot lines are, it looks as if, there is still a phase 2 for the temporary construction of the roadway.
Of course.
But that roadway runs over the property lines of multiple lots, and it effectively creates, let's see, 1, 2, two fully landlocked lots and one that's touching an easement that it's not clear what's happening to that easement afterwards.
Well, it, it does, it creates them because the whole idea is to phase them, I'm sort of scratching my head, it's quite clear from the map is what's happening, they're gonna be phased, phase 2, expansion of right-of-way and a road reverter. What's the mystery?
So, if, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try now to join the Zoom, and it might take me a minute to do that, so I can share my screen and show this.
And understand why this is being done, the whole idea is to keep the, the property available for farming as long as possible. The other option is just to build the whole road out this way, but I, I don't think anybody wants to do that.
Especially, I think you're, I'm gonna try to figure out how to, I'm gonna try to connect to Zoom here so I can share my screen, because I think you're actually missing, the issue is not the phase.
I'm not missing any issues, trust me.
The issue is not the phase 1, phase 2 road construction. It's that in the site plan, it's showing that the road that is constructed will be effectively an easement afterwards, as opposed to being an independent owned in perhaps by an HOA, shared right-of-way to act, private driveway to access those holes. So, that is the difference, is whether that roadway is constructed as an easement across them, and those lots are independent lots.
Now, I think you're missing the whole point.
Well, so.
These, these lots are not gonna be constructed until phase 2.
Yeah, I totally understand that, but here's how we can solve this very easily. Can you pull out the site plan that we actually approved at sketch plan versus the one that was recently submitted and put them out in front of us, and I think.
Do we have a full size?
Yeah. Right-of-way, we can get to the bottom of this, clear this up.
Yeah, we know it croaches on the lot, because it's been a few months, but there's a, here's a, here's a sketch plan, it always has a phase 2, phase.
What's the last revised date on that, John?
It's been filed, I, I.
What's the last revised date on it, just so, what's the last revised date on that one?
That's not the one.
This is July 1st, 2024. I don't think that's the latest. I don't think that's the date, that's roughly similar.
You're looking now at, you, that's not a sketch plan. You have, that's a Reiner plan you have, so you're not gonna find a sketch plan approval. The sketch plan was based upon a, on a intersignance draw.
The sketch plan approval document referenced the, the title and the last dated or last revised map.
And in terms of what's happening to that square footage, I mean, these are, they're gonna be rolled into the lots after.
Yeah, John, I don't think we're far apart on this, I think we're just, I just wanna make sure we're looking at apples and apples here. Right, right, because the way.
Remember the purpose for a sketch plan approval, a sketch plan approval is to get basic conceptual plans. We've gone well beyond that in the sketch plan, we showed a phase, a two-phase development. The whole idea is, again, is that these lots are farmed as long as they can be, so we're not building a major subdivision road down there.
So, the date I have on the sketch plan I was given was January 11th, 2024, so that is the sketch plan that I was given to.
Who gave you that?
It was what was submitted with the documents.
Who gave you that? It's with the village file, and it was referenced in the board's decision.
This, this says Plan B.
Is anybody surprised that this was going to be a two-phased subdivision? I know the answer to that is no.
I don't think that's the issue here, is whether it's a one-phase or two-phase. We always, look, the great thing about the sketch plan process here is, it was thoroughly vetted and discussed, and we, and we were all on the same page, so that, you know, our expectation up here was that we can move forward very quickly on this, because all the critical issues were debated and, and agreed upon. I think the confusion here is. So, that's what's unclear to us, so.
What's unclear?
So, for example, if this were to go to phase 2, right, we're not, we're not saying that we wanna see the, the road go all the way in from day 1, but if we were to go to phase 2, and that road would be extended, that first cul-de-sac there would go away, right? That second cul-de-sac to the north would reappear, and all those lots at that north end of the development there would not be flaglots, right, would have direct road access.
They're not drawn as flaglots.
They are, and what we.
No, they're not, this is 40 feet, it's not 20 feet, that's the issue, this isn't a flaglot. It's got 40 feet of frontage.
If I can just show you here, so in this one, which is what I was given that was told was the approved, I was given by the village, was told this was the approved sketch plan. You see the road comes in, and you see these dark lines of the property lines, right? Every lot has access to this driveway in the final condition.
After the second phase.
In this one, this lot, this lot, this is the lot line. This is the lot line, this is the lot line. And.
There's a road, this is gonna be built out, the cul-de-sac will be there.
This shows a road, this shows an easement with the driveway running.
No, it doesn't, it's a two phases of a road.
Where is, where is the property line?
Where's the property line, this is a 50-foot wide road, there it is.
Now, I want you to draw the property line.
Oh, okay, well, that's the sort of stuff you deal with on final, I mean, good lord. I mean, this is a conceptual sketch plan, we've been preliminary stage, okay, we can do that, there's no problem with it. If you want certain notes, to me, it's obvious, what is that other than a road and a lot line? It's a 50-foot wide road.
It wasn't, it wasn't, John, it wasn't so obvious to the rest of us, and, you know, we just wanna be crystal clear here so that there isn't any confusion, that's all. If we can take this opportunity to clear up the confusion and make sure that we're all still on the same page, we can continue to move this thing along with a lack of.
If I see something like that, and there's a cul-de-sac at the end, and there's nothing, that's nothing other than a lot line.
Yeah, but having done, but the, this is actually not showing that the lot line will be here. This is showing that this property's lot line will be this.
You read it totally differently than I do.
Well, that's how, that's how the property's gonna be at phase 1, correct?
Yes.
And then phase 2, the lot line will be there.
Because these lots will be being developed until phase 2.
So, is the short answer, just, just, I think I'm getting.
The planning board's approving the final layout of the lots.
I think I see the disconnect.
And the road construction phase is a separate issue.
So, you're saying this should be shown as like an easement the whole time?
No, it was proposed as a road. It's proposed as a road.
Yeah, so it's gonna end up.
So, the lot, the lot would be just this?
It's just like this.
When you have a reverter, when you have a reverter, by necessity, after the reverter is affected, guess what, the configurations of the lots change by their very nature.
So, the other piece of this is, if I can show you quickly, is that this also, and I think you can see it now, the difference, is that I also can't tell when you say what the square footage is, are the square footages of these lots with this, or with, like, what's the square footage of the roadway?
Yeah, these numbers include the lot lines that you highlight, as you highlighted on.
As, as they highlighted, so you don't take the road out of your lot line?
No, not on that, not on that.
So, is the disconnect, or, or the confusion that the plan before us now comports more with phase 1?
It's a different layout.
It's, it is a, Alex, be direct, be helpful, it's a marginally different layout at most, but certainly not enough to get excited about in terms of a delta between a sketch plan approval and a preliminary application.
So, I think that one of the main.
You can dance on the head of needles all day, and this thing will never get approved. But what, remember what the purpose for a sketch plan approval is, which is to give conceptual approval, which we've more than adequately done. If you would like. which we've more than adequately done. If you would like, uh, different notations or different lines drawn and blowed or something like that, we're certainly not going to do anything other than accommodate you. What I'm saying is that it's not enough to prohibit this from being declared uh, complete and scheduled public hearing. That's all I'm saying. And then I, and then there's a whole list of things in your memo where you, I mean, you say you don't, what, what's the, what's the, what is the size of the entire subdivision? It's there? What are the size of the lots that are there? What's the name of that?
So subdivision wasn't the question. The question was.
But that's what you have in your memo.
So, so yeah, the question I have in my memo is it's not clear because you're incorporating this part of the road into the lot calculation.
Okay, we can, we can clarify that.
Yes, I don't think any of this is prohibitive. I actually think you had a sketch plan that, if that's reflected here, that would resolve a lot of the issues.
Rick, can we do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we cleared that up. Yep.
If I could just go through just some of these things.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a name of the proposed subdivision. This is it. It's in the law. R R F A C F L L C. That's the name of the subdivision.
Okay.
Uh, license of, and the seal of the licensed lands, there it is.
It may not have been on the one aisle.
This is what we filed. I can't help but have somebody, and it's unfortunate for you.
It's okay. These are, these are minor, these are, these are minor issues. These are literally just going through the code, item by item of the things that are required.
Total acreage of the, of the entire tract is here. These are things that you're saying are missing, but the total acreage is here. We talked about the right-of-way area. We can, can fix that for you. There's not going to be any dedication. How is that answered? If someone is going to dedicate roads or anything like that, there's a stamp on the subdivision map that says the owner, subdivider, uh, and hereby irrevocably offers to dedicate these items to the public. These are going to be private roads. So there is no indication that there is going to be any dedication. So there shouldn't be any questions as to that. Include a graphic scale in the plans. There they are. One equals six, one, one inch equals 600 in the key map, the one key map, and the other scale is one inch equals 1,000. The scale here is one equals 100. I, I'm just sort of.
So John, let's keep it high. This stuff we can work out. I want to keep it very high.
The engineers' comments on this, um, but the, the layout was a, a major concern because this one reverted to an earlier version that was not the approved sketch plan. I think that there were a few other planning considerations that were highlighted that had been previously discussed that were not reflected in the current plan, um, that.
I mean, but I would like to talk about some of this stuff. A street light is recommended for the intersection of Fowler Street and Fowler Lane? What?
It, it may not be chosen by the planning board. It was an engineer's recommendation based on the code.
Look, I'm not, I'm not going to get tied up with streetlights at this point, right?
Yeah, it's getting to my microphone.
We can do that at final, but there, there were some other high-level things that we just want to make sure.
They wanted the, 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 the topo for the roads and everything. Did they look at the, at, did they look at the road plan? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so typically there's a cross-section of the road that shows the way it curves. That indicates how the drainage will be handled. Um.
Well, you have a road profile here and you have the drainage structures proposed. And this, this sort of stuff that.
How about the, what, what are the buffers among the ponds?
Also the, which the sketch plan did have them on there, but the, the various buffers that require, for wetlands, um, the wetlands code.
Would you like us to add 125 and 150 and 200?
Yes. And then there was a consideration that the, the, the planning board was, um, the, about, that my understanding is under the previous sketch plan, uh, concept for providing a vegetated screening for the agricultural operation was submitted.
You did. You submitted that. The sketch plan process is part of the whole. The sketch plan process and the preliminary application form the application. We submitted, uh, an areas design planting plan.
Yeah.
Uh, interestingly enough, there's never been any comment to that.
Oh, there's been, I know for a fact I commented on that one.
Great. So, but you have what we've proposed.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's not changed.
That's not changed.
We're gonna, yeah, okay.
There was the issue, which I understand is, is still, is of access for maintenance to the pond, which, um, my understanding is provided for every, um, pond, uh, access subdivision in Southampton. And the memo provided some examples of those from prior subdivisions.
Well, the memo provided one example. I'm not aware of any others. The memo provided the subdivision that comes in off of Old Town, from about 10 feet.
Yeah, that one doesn't work.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's 10 feet. The one, you, you're talking about the.
Look, we need to fight, we, we've said this from the beginning. We've got to find a way to clean that pond if we want to. We're, we're working on that. It's in the village, you know.
I have been in contact, just, you should be aware, I've been without prejudice to our position that you don't have any power to do this. I have been in contact, I have been in contact. I, I, to me, it's like, only shown this to 10 lawyers that like, these people are crazy. It's black letter law. But in any event, I've been in contact with, uh, with, with one of the neighbors.
Yeah.
As has the building department.
Yeah.
So we're trying to do that, but it's very, very, very important that, that you realize that this memo cites 9739B as somehow allowing this board to create access. It does absolutely, this is important. It does absolutely nothing of the kind. That is a section of the code that says you have the authority to create buffers along the, um, edge of the subdivision so that, um, you prevent siltation and other things. This is what the section says. It says, "For the purposes of such protection," protection? Protecting what? "Influence of induced nitrification caused by the fertilization of perimeter properties." Okay? It says that you can require easements or covenants to accomplish such protection. And that's what we have here. We've done that from the get-go. And then interestingly enough, it says, which the memo, the memo had a very contentious and limited, uh, recitation of 9739B. It, interestingly enough, left out the very last sentence of that section, which says, "Parkland buffer areas or easements shall be dedicated essentially in a natural condition, leaving the area with sufficient ground cover to prevent lateral movements of silts and fertilizers." That, that doesn't suggest that you're going to have, use this to have force and access. If anything, it says leave everything alone. So this section doesn't help you at all. I just, it's important for council to hear that. It's important for you to hear it.
Yep.
So my humble suggestion would be that this is complete enough to have a scheduled public hearing. You, you, you should get the public, um, uh, input on it now. Uh, it doesn't, um, it doesn't require any given, uh, approval or condition on this. Schedule the public hearing. Let's see what the public has to say.
Yep. Wait, just quick question. Where are we on SECRE on this one?
On the long form VA.
Okay.
Any, um, any questions for Mr. Bennett?
No.
No.
Okay, um, appreciate you assisting the village on this access for cleanup. Everybody's trying. We all agreed from the, from the get, yeah, no, everybody's trying. Um, I, I remain optimistic, but I think if, we've said from the very beginning, we all have to work together to, to fix this and it, we are. So I appreciate your effort and your effort, Rick, on that. Assuming we clean up the site plan to address Lisa's comments, which I think we can, I'm fine scheduling, uh, a hearing.
Okay. So just for the board's edification, and I think I've told you before, that once we find it complete, then we have 62 days in which we can hold the public hearing. That's under both the village code and the state village law. And then from that public hearing, which we can leave open, it doesn't necessarily have to be one night, once the public hearing is closed, then we have 62 days to come to a decision. The only.
On preliminary.
Preliminary. Um, and then we will go through final review. So this is not the final step. Um, final review is where everything is kind of really dotted, I's dotted, T's crossed. The only thing, and I, I don't know if I'm making more of it, but I was under the impression that we need to have SECRE completely handled, for lack of a better term, for finding completeness. Alex, do you?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to have like a pos deck, neg deck, draft EIS before we find it complete? Or can we just proceed?
Uh, I'm not sure in terms of completeness, but certainly the planning board should categorize the action and then declare themselves lead agency and determine if their intent is to seek lead agency or to commence an coordinated or an uncoordinated review.
Okay.
I mean, why wouldn't, in terms of completeness of SECRE, I would think you'd want the public hearing as quickly as possible. SECRE says you're supposed to come to a determination as quickly as possible.
I'm really sorry, but we cannot hear John.
SECRE says you're supposed to come to a determination as quickly as possible. I would think you want, you would want the public hearing.
Okay. So the dot, but you're saying that, and I, forgive me, I did look through the Dropbox, but I can't remember it all photographically, but you did submit everything needed for SECRE. The long form, okay.
I wouldn't begin to submit anything other than, and, and, and it's the enhanced long form.
Ooh.
Right, right.
Being fancy with me. Okay, I, I have no further questions unless the board does.
So the application is not complete yet until we get this cleaned up and Lisa's.
No, my position is that it is certainly more than sufficient.
My position is it is.
How? How?
Because I don't want to start the clock ticking until we've got all these I's dotted and T's crossed. So when that application is good and I've got a memo cleaned up from Lisa, then, um,
Let's go through the memo.
We can say it's a complete.
Let's go through the memo then.
I think the biggest issue is, is what we just said that would be pretty quick to fix, which is making the, the sketch plan, this plan, this preliminary plan match the approved sketch plan in the layout.
So we get you that and you say we're not, we're going to schedule a public hearing, but we're not going to have it unless you get us that, the stuff that you have identified and, and.
We're saying the same thing then.
We'll cancel if it doesn't, if John doesn't do it.
So the idea is that we, we.
We're saying the same thing, right? Assuming we get that prior, we'll schedule it, assuming we get that prior to the next one.
Well, we have 62 days, so you can put it out far enough. And I mean, I've worked with the Rainer group plenty. Say hi to Kelly for me. I know that they'll get it done pretty quickly, so.
You're good with that? You understand?
Yes, and I thought you were saying you wanted them to come together. You wanted to see that.
But we're assuming, we're assuming that, we're going to schedule a meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing contingent upon all of that happening, which I'm sure you'll get done, right?
So we'll be notified.
Correct. And you're okay? You're good with that? Okay.
And just also so the board knows that the public hearing will need to be noticed. We'll run an ad in the Southampton press. The applicant will have to put up two signs, one facing both. Street frontage, certified mailings will go out to all of the owners surrounding the property. So.
Don't make it the March meeting because there's a, a, a.
21-day.
21-day comment.
The board.
There's a 21-day notice period. It's not like a ZBA where it's 10 days. So it probably makes sense to make it an April day.
Yeah, the board may have to set their April calendar, which we have later on the agenda, before we decide on a, on a hearing date. We only have two meetings scheduled currently.
I'm just trying to look down the road.
Understood. So, um, the second meeting this month is canceled, right? Because it's a holiday, right?
What, what would be the third Monday of February?
You want to do, I'm assuming we're going to be first and third Mondays in March because that's.
That's what we've scheduled so far, which is the third and the 17th.
You don't want the March, the first Monday? You want the second?
I don't know. Monday, Monday, February. It's early February. That's right. Yeah. Well, as, as quickly as you think comfortably, you can get it done.
We would have to prepare a legal notice to give them the mailings. Since the mailings is almost 30 days, probably not for the early March meeting. I have to see if we can make the March 17th.
St. Patrick's Day.
Make it, what's the first?
St. Patrick's Day.
What's the first meeting April?
It hasn't been scheduled yet. I can tell you what it would be.
I know you're going to shoot me, but I don't want, I don't want people to miss.
April 7 would be.
April 7.
April 7.
St. Patrick's Day.
It just gets everybody, there's no tension. You've got plenty of time to do their work.
If that works for you, that works for us.
Well, I'm, I don't think Mike Plines, no, but he's not going to have, or he hasn't had Alex's concern and my concern about getting notifications out, getting Rick to get those changes made so that everybody can see them well in advance. And April 7th will be here before you know it, so. Rick? That's a hesitating.
I just want to make. If you want to schedule it earlier. What?
Why, if Alex says we can't, like, why shouldn't, and then we have to put it off? It's better to do it in April.
Do it the 7th.
Have everything done. Have everything ready.
Let's get it done this.
April 7.
Okay, April 7.
I just want to make sure we have a quorum because the board hasn't yet scheduled a meeting for that day.
Assuming that we agree that April 7th is our next meeting later on on the agenda, we'll get you guys on for April 7th. Two, two questions. That landscape plan for the area in front of the barns, north of the barns, we want to, we're going to talk about that more next time. Um, and the other thing I want to float a triable in on is that driveway that we've always talked about, open, close, right? Um, how do you feel about if that driveway were one-way, like entrance only? Or do you need it both ways?
It asks me why to get the tractor-trailers and, you know, cheater in there.
Sorry, Rick, could you step up to the microphone, please? Yeah.
I mean, it needs to stay that width so the tractor-trailers can.
Width is fine, but how, how would you feel if that was entrance only and then the exit would be one of the other two?
But then leaving with tractor-trailers, that's such a tight, to pull out onto Fowler Street with the tractor-trailer to make a left turn.
You're talking about leaving both curb cuts open, but directing traffic in only.
We're talking about leaving, I mean, what we heard you ask for before was all three, there are three curb cuts. There are three operative curb cuts, right?
That's right.
Right.
So there's the westernmost, there's the next one as you're going around, just before you hit the curve. And then there's the one, we're talking about leaving all of those open.
There actually was one other one that we closed. It used to be four, now it's three.
Based on a discussion we had with our consultant here, which, you know, we've always had some safety issues with that because it's right on the curve. One idea that was floated was we'll make that entrance only so traffic is just pulling in that way and then it would have to exit under the, uh, next driveway that's to the east, um, or the third driveway, which is all, sorry, which is where.
I know what you're saying, but like, that next driveway, there's all the beach parking right there on the grass. You can't pull out.
Got it. How about the?
With the tractor-trailer.
How about the third one?
And then over onto Fowler Street.
Yeah.
Same thing. That's tight coming out on a blind curve. That's even more of a traffic issue.
All right.
So at least, you know, where it's at, it's highly visible. You can see both directions. You know, that, that makes the most sense.
Okay.
I've always thought there's plenty of site distance there.
And as part of the Halsey property, they have to maintain their hedge low so you can have visibility. The village does make them cut that frequently.
Yeah.
So you can preserve the site distance.
Yeah, okay. Um, just wanted to ask that question, see what the answer was. All right. How does this work? Do we?
Just do a motion to set the public hearing.
That's it.
It's, do I have to make it contingent upon us actually having a.
You can say that. Motion to set public hearing contingent upon acceptable revisions to the site plan.
Subject to, I'm talking about the date. We haven't approved more, you know, April 7th is a official date.
April 7th, subject to mutual clarification of the precise details of the plan.
Unless we, can we just wait and do it at the end of the meeting? Would you mind? Or do you want to get going?
April 7th is great. If, what would happen to the April meeting? It would get further into April?
Now, we're going to do, I mean, we just haven't.
That's the case. That's the case. I'm not going to quibble over it.
Yeah, we just haven't, we have not set an agenda past March. So when we set the agenda past March, that motion later on will get you on the agenda for April 7th.
Yeah. Hopefully the 7th, but.
Yeah, okay.
The next one moves into Easter week and a lot of people will be.
We'll have to give you the legal notice. We'll definitely let you know. We'll have to give you the legal notice, so we'll be sure to let you know as soon as we know from the board.
Well, let me know tomorrow that these folks have decided.
The 7th is a good date. If it's earlier, it's St. Patrick's Day. If it's later, it's Easter week. Easter's as late as it can be and Easter's going to be a mess this year.
Well, the 7th would be probably a good idea, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
On balance, it is probably the best date.
April 7th. You can count on April 7th.
Just let me know.
Yep, absolutely.
So we're, we're good on this then?
So you can do a motion for the first meeting in April?
Yeah. First motion to adjourn this, uh, no, schedule a public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing.
For, um, our, our.
First meeting in April.
First April meeting.
Yeah, uh, our 560 Wickapunk Road in our first April meeting.
Thanks a lot.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yep, thank you. Thanks.
You'll get used to my spirited attitude. You should have taken a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, look.
My case to me too.
This is.
Lisa, he's a trained arguer.
Yeah.
Way over, so he just, just.
You have to zealously.
He doesn't ever. We, you know, the village made some changes here, so we have new consultants, H2M, you know, they, we have. We, you know, the village made some changes here, so we have new consultants, H two M, you know, we have, give them some time to get up to speed. You'll learn to love John the way the rest of us do. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Great seeing all of you.
Yeah. Okay. Next on.
That's the nicest thing I've heard all day, Mark, thank you. I can go home with a spring on my.
Good, good. Next on the agenda is Bridgehampton Realty Group, one oh five Willow Streets.
Yes, so this is a new subdivision application that's here for a sketch plan, so this is the first time the board will be seeing this. It was submitted relatively recently, so H two M is still working on a memo we don't have yet, but we thought this would be a good opportunity for the applicant to come present the application as it is now and have the board ask any questions they may have.
Thank you.
CEO, CEO, architect.
Excuse me, she's got a different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this property is like an interesting.
Can you hear her? Yeah, just to make sure you speak.
Yeah. This property like this interesting U shape, and that's how it is right now. Oh, this is the old. So the proposed subdivision would be drawing an angle right here, so the part with the existing house and garage, this will be one parcel, and the one in the back, this big piece, will be cut into two. And this lot is forty-eight thousand seven hundred fifteen square, and the one in the front is forty thousand one hundred seventy-eight square. They will have a common driveway right here for a short period. Oh. Okay, blue, green, and red. So this, this common driveway will stop here, and then they will, one goes this direction and the other one goes south. So the common driveway is rather short right here, and the zoning for this area is twelve point five, and our size is oversized, and I'm new with the subdivision, so I don't know what else you need. I'm here to listen and see what else I need to provide for you. I did go to the health department, and I worked with them, and they told me it to them is fine, that I should be able to divide it into.
Okay, any questions?
Not yet. I gotta go see the place.
So in your conversations with the health department, because I think this is our twelve point five zoning area, did you, did you discuss with them higher density?
They don't want me to do higher density, that's what they said, I can only divide into three lots.
Yeah, okay, I think the.
But they said I can divi, I don't have to have equal size, I can divide them into whatever, whatever size I can, but three.
Okay.
Lucy, I think what's sometimes helpful for the board to have on file is a yield plan for a subdivision that conforms to the village's zoning. So imagining for, that you didn't have the health department restriction, what would the lots look like? For example, if you were to introduce a cul-de-sac or another layout, just to help them understand the, how this is a reduced yield and what the zoning would otherwise allow.
A yield plan?
A yield plan.
Squires Holden will probably be able to show you what that means.
So, yeah, this is, this is the plan, let me tell me about this, so, so. I actually don't quite know what the yield plan is, so, but we yield three, that's how I see it.
Well, a yield plan, it's kind of like a hypothetical, showing that what would the layout be if the lots were built to the twelve point five zoning? So, because what you're showing is that you're actually resulting in less lots than you could if it were built out under the full zoning.
Yeah, okay.
If you talk to Squires Holden and Bob Smith, they'll, they'll explain it all to you.
But we are not allowed to do it with, from the Suffolk County point of view.
Correct.
So would it be really needed to do the high density?
It's, it's a little bit theoretical, but it helps the planning board to have that on file, because it demonstrates that this layout is preferable, and this layout is preferable, and because it results in fewer lots than might otherwise be permitted. It's something that's sometimes required as part of a subdivision to demonstrate what the maximum amount of lots is, when you're, to show that three is a preferential layout.
Okay.
If that makes sense, especially when flag lots are considered.
I have a question, when you have this driveway, and you said it's temporary, like, what, is it going to change later and not be one, all, all the way up? Is that what you were saying, or that driveway would be shared by lot two and lot three forever?
The driveway would be shared by these two at the beginning.
And then what?
Physically.
Yeah.
It would be permanent in, in time, but it would only be shared in that hashed part that Lucy is pointing out, and then it would split, and then they would each have their independent driveways on their own independent properties.
It's a segregated flagpole.
So, at the very beginning, I actually square, actually drew a common driveway that goes all the way to the back, let me see, if I have a draw here, I believe I have one.
But they would always exit on Willow Street?
Yes.
In that same vein, but they were all.
So just, like, they, he actually drew a common driveway that goes all the way to the back. I said there's not necessary to share that long a driveway, to share a little bit in the front.
Okay.
And then this one will can go into their own lot. So I guess the, the reason that we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of entrance on its own, we want to share it at the beginning, so have less curb cut.
Right. Yeah, and that's something that the code requires when you have multiple flag lots like this, where you have adjoining flag poles, is that instead of multiple driveways all lined up with curb cuts very close to each other, that they share a driveway for fewer curb cuts.
So what would the ownership structure be of the first twenty, sixty, seventy feet until the driveway's split off? Lot two and lot three.
I think they're all going to own each one with its own pole, but this one will have to give easement to this one at the very beginning. So the easement will read from this point to this point, to this point, to this point, to this point, and then common access.
Sorry, right, good, so the village comprehensive master plan disfavors flag lots, as you probably know, and it disfavors specifically flag lots where access is granted by easement, right? So there are a couple of ways to address, and the, and the planning board has taken a very dim view in the past of, of subdivisions where access is by flaglot easement. There, there are probably a couple of ways to solve that problem, one way would be put a road there, let's say wide road, so that both those lots have access to a road, and it's technically no longer a flaglot situation.
Yeah, that's something that, that's where the yield map would come in, that's a design that would be shown in the yield map to show how that could be achieved. Probably, it's up to the board, but that's usually not a preferred layout if, if a road is only going to be built for one or two homes, where they can just as feasibly share a driveway or have a flagpole. So where, that's where having that yield map would help explain why a flagpole is a preferable layout.
Right.
So you're saying that I should build a road, come here, do a cul-de-sac and come out, is that what you're trying to say?
That, that might be what you would show on a yield plan to demonstrate how you could get compliant lots without a flagpole.
All right, that, that would be one thing that we'd like to see, the second thing that we'd like to see is, rather than the flagpole enter on the right side or the east side of that, the curb cut would be in the center of that panhandle there, right?
Yeah, actually, we originally drew it for the squires to do it that way, but I don't know why he didn't do it that way, maybe he had his own mind. Because I thought, I thought, because I'm an architect, so I always think about prettiness, it's more important to me than functionality sometimes. So we were going to do a road in the middle and then have trees on both sides, it's almost like an alleys.
Yes.
I, I drew it for them, but they did it this way, they actually did it this way for, first.
Yeah, so I think the planning board would agree with you on the architectural prettiness approach, as opposed to the, the approach that's on the plan that had been filed, so we'd like to see, it'd probably be helpful in considering this, both approaches, Alex's yield plan.
Yes.
And it would be sufficiently wide, the same width for the cars with the alleys, then it would be here, it's just not pushed over that way, correct?
If I can interject one second, because I think all you're moving is the easement, not the lot line.
I'm moving the easement in the middle.
Just the easement, so it's a shared easement across both lots, so that you can put that driveway in the center.
So one person leaves half of their lot to the other side, the other side gives easement to this side, so, so basically, actually, there's, instead of one easement, there has to be two.
Yeah, that's probably why they drew it that way, so there could just be one easement, but the other way, ideally, both would retain actual physical access with their lots to the road, but the easement would be shared in the center, so you could make a better layout.
Okay. I need to talk to the county too, like, if I build a road, and then they're asking forty thousand square per lot, then I don't have enough square footage.
Did the county say, the county wouldn't have said forty thousand square feet, he just said two lots, yeah, three lots, I mean, right.
I'm, I'm just going to talk to them, so you, so either we have the flag lot, instead of the common driveway here, we'll put the common driveway in the middle, then we have two easements, or we're going to do a yield map and see, go all the way in there, cul-de-sac come out.
Yeah, I think that's important to show as well, just so the planning board can see the options out there.
Okay.
Right?
Can I draw the, myself? Or you have to be surveying?
I don't know how that works, how does that work?
For a, this is just a sketch plan? You're an architect? Okay, you can, you can draw a sketch plan by yourself.
Yeah, because otherwise we'll be waiting forever, and, and, because there's too many people.
You could even, if, if you'd like to try to trace the surveys, so the dimensions are all the same?
Yeah, the survey, my set plan and the survey would be the same size, because we're coming from the same card file. So I can draw something, and we can discuss, and then later on I tell square, this is what we're going to do, and then.
Exactly, when we finally decide which way to go, then the squires can draw the official.
Because, because we're going to go back and forth too many times.
That's a good idea, you're good.
I'm good with that.
You're good with that?
Yeah, I think that should, should address the issue.
Okay.
Okay, I think I have it, it's road, I wonder, yield plan, road placement options, that's about it, right?
Yeah, the yield plan and the road placement.
Yeah, either in the middle.
Yeah.
And what you, what you might also show is the proposed building envelopes for each of the lots with the yards, I think that might be helpful.
Building envelope, I think we did something like this.
Was that in the file, I don't remember seeing it.
No, it's not, it's not correct.
Oh, okay.
I didn't follow, this is the sketch I did with the squires.
Gotcha.
But then in the end, I, I even did the houses in there. So, I'll do the, so you, you don't want the house on there, you just want the.
Just the envelope, yeah, to show the setbacks for primary and accessory structures.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's sometimes helpful.
Okay, I did the house, I did the septic, then I went to the health department and talked with them.
Yeah.
They said it's fine, that's how I can buy it, okay, looks like we can do it.
Good, okay, do we need to adjourn this, or?
Uh, yeah, I would adjourn it to a future reading, and then you can let H two M know if you want any additional follow-up from them in the interim, if you want to wait to see what's resubmitted.
Yeah, when would you like to come back?
I thought we were going to wait for a consultant's report, is that right?
So you'd like, sure.
Is that right, Alex, because?
It's up to the, it's up to the board?
It's up to the board, so, when, maybe not, not immediately, maybe the end of March or something, so I did the text return.
So Lisa.
So I, so it's just, if you want to have some written comments based on this submission, which would be probably restate a lot of what already was said here, we can, I can do that, or it may be if, you know, if you want to wait until the next you submit again, and we can, I can take a thorough look at that application.
Okay.
Which, which is.
I, it, you taught me.
Do you have a preference, would you like her to get written comments on this version, or should we see the revisions before we?
I think you might warrant waiting till the revisions, because it sounds like this is going to change a little bit.
Yeah, let's get the revisions, then you can write your report, right? And how long, is that a week, you think?
I do have two weeks to have time to.
And how long do you think it'll take for you to do revisions, two weeks, to get them back in?
I'll try to put it back in.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I can make it the early March, maybe.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, let's adjourn this to March seventeenth, or we can adjourn you to April seventh, you pick.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
March seventeenth?
March seventeenth, all right, so a motion to adjourn Bridgehampton Realty Group, one oh five Willow Street to our March seventeenth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd have it.
Thanks.
Take care, Ruth.
Thank you. There are three site plan reviews on the agenda, it doesn't look like anyone's here for, well, the three, I'm going to. Eight sixty-five Merrick, twenty thirty County Road, thirty-nine A, and seventy-four White Street, no one here to talk about those?
Uh, yes, the applicant for eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings asked for an adjournment, I spoke to the applicant for seventy-four White Street, who is pending before the health department and asked for more time, I did not hear back from the applicant, Brian Kelly, twenty thirty County Road, thirty-nine A, but they are pending before the zoning board and adjourned their January meeting.
Okay, if we adjourn all three of those to April seventh, if we have a meeting then?
The only one I'm not sure of is eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings, they did receive their zoning board approval, so pending whatever updated plans, they may be ready to go sooner than that.
Which, which one?
That's at eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings at twenty-two Windmill Lane, so that was adjourned pending zoning board, the zoning board has approved that application. So now it's coming back to the planning board for site plan review. Lisa's on thirty-six Windmill Lane. Yep.
Yep, we're going to, we'll get to that one, I'm saving that one, because I know they're, yeah, I know they're here. Okay, so Alex, are you thinking the seventeenth or the third for that one?
I would maybe put that to the third, just to see if they, they'll have any update for that.
That's eight sixty-five, right?
Eight sixty-five, yeah, that'll get that to the way.
Yeah, motion to adjourn eight sixty-five Merrick to our February third.
March.
March third, sorry, March third, yeah, today's, March third meeting.
A second, oh, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then a motion to adjourn Brian Kelly and seventy-four White Street to, I'm going to push those out to April seventh, yeah, to, motion to.
Waiting for the zoning board.
Adjourn those to April seventh, second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In favor?
Aye, oh, yeah, no, second, aye.
All right, let's, let's go to thirty-six Windmill Lane, okay, Lisa's on Zoom?
She's breaking in front.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Yep.
Hi.
Hi, how is everybody?
Good.
I'm sorry I can't be there, I happen to sadly be in sunny Mexico.
Terrible.
Terrible, I'm sorry. So I believe that John Betts is also on Zoom, he had a little bit of an accident over the weekend, he's a little under the weather, so he is not there in person, but he will be watching and listening, and if there's anything that we need to ask him, I'm sure that he will jump in. So, is it possible to share my screen?
Yes. Yes. Lisa's caught in a tariff.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
We hear you, yes. We have a picture of you not moving, you're frozen.
Yeah, I have a pic, I have a picture of me not moving too. Okay, but you can hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, well, I was gonna share my screen, but I guess that won't work. So, did you hear me say anything about John Betts?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Okay, okay. So, all right, well, I will unfortunately, I guess, not be able to share my screen, but hopefully we can get it all worked out anyway. So, as the board hopefully remembers, we were here just shy of a year ago in front of you. We came for you before, for Phase Two, which is currently under construction, which was an expansion of the restaurant use of Shippeys. And we told you at the time that we would be back for Phase Three, which is the expansion of the restaurant portion, which would include the Beer Garden and a second floor event space, if you will, in the, in the building that we're currently constructing under Phase Two. So, we did get comments, we made the original application back in November, and we got comments right before the December sixteenth meeting. But rather than kind of waste your time, being that we wouldn't have had time to get the changes made by the Monday meeting, we adjourned, not realizing that there wouldn't be a meeting in January. So here we are. In January, I did respond to most of the consultant's notes, and I did just two hours ago see her responses back. So I think that we're pretty good. A couple of the comments seem to be regarding, most of it looked like it was resolved, which I, hopefully she can confirm. I unfortunately can't share my screen, so I can't show you that. But one of the comments seemed to have to do with parking. And so the parking plan that I submitted was, it actually does show ten spots. I don't think she realized that there was one kind of perpendicular to the other nine that were, that were shown on that sketch. But the, those, that, that plan, if you will, was designed and coordinated by the mayor. So that's his consultant, he requested that, I'm not even sure what company it was, but he and Steve Phillips, the village superintendent there, they, that's their plan. That's not our plan. But obviously, since we would have to put the majority of our septic system out there, you know, in that easement area, we would work in conjunction with the mayor and Steve Phillips, and we've had conversations about that. But I think some of the questions, some of the consultant's questions had to do with the size of the parking spaces and, and what, you know, what allocation, whether they were ADA or whether they were not.
Yep.
And that was, that was really determined, that, that layout is totally determined by the mayor and his consultants. So I'm not really sure what you would be asking from us, and if it's appropriate for me to then try to turn around, oh, there I am. If it's appropriate for me to then try to turn around and get that information from the mayor, or if we just trust that the mayor is doing his thing. I'm not sure what you would like us to do with that. And then I believe that she also had a question about the fact that the apartments, even though part of our health department request says that we are actually giving up the apartments for the time being, why our parking and our proposal still shows the apartments. And that was purely done based on the fact that our hope is that at some point the village will get to the sewer district that they have been working on, talking about for, for several years. And so we were trying to not have to come back to the zoning board appeals for additional parking for the apartments in the future. So we were trying to actually just kind of mainstream it. If it needs to be separated, I guess we can have that conversation. But that was the reason that we were kind of asking for more parking relief than we would currently need under the current proposal, if you will. So, those were the two things that I kind of noticed. Just so that you understand, I, you know, our goal, of course, is to get to the public hearing. You know, this, this application, obviously, we've been working on it since we had, since we were in front of you last year. We've, we've been in front of the trustees. The mayor and the trustees have given us a kind of conditional easement that we are working on trying to get that laid out, which of course, it, it changes slightly here and there, being that we're also in front of the Suffolk County Department of Health. We have put out a, you know, a advertisement. There's, like, you know, again, as the chairman said last time, there's nobody in Suffolk that doesn't know what's going on at Shippeys. We've put ads in the paper, there's, there's a request again for people to make comments. We've been, you know, trying to take into account what the public is looking for. Ninety-nine point nine percent of them seem to be positive. I think there were over two hundred responses, you know, in less than a week, to the, to the questionnaire. So, you know, we are trying to work with the public, we're trying to, we're trying to get this to... We have been in front of the health department, and we are, we've whittled our, our requests from them down to, you know, there's not many left. It's like less than a page, I think, of things that we're still trying to fix and work out. But one of the things that they're asking for is a SECRE determination from, they say the town, but they mean the village. So, we're here today, we're asking you to allow us to schedule a public hearing since you do not have another meeting in February, you know, and, and we're asking for that. We're asking you to, to, you know, complete SECRE so that we can then give that to the health department and check that off the list, because obviously we can't, we can't close out them without you. And we're going to ask you if, you know, you can make a recommendation that we be able to, like we did last time, go in front of the zoning board of appeals and/or the architectural review board so that we can get feedback from all of the agencies and have a, you know, a complete and cohesive application. So that's kind of the general idea. I didn't really jump into, you know, the Beer Garden and the design of it. We have some renderings, interior renderings, we have some renderings for the exterior. One of the, one of the other things mentioned in the consultant's report is the, you know, dumpsters in the back by the garage.
Yep.
You know, we have, we've kind of extended a thin wall, and again, I'm sorry, I can't share my screen, but we've kind of extended a thin wall on the back of the garage to hide the two dumpsters that we're going to use for Shippeys. And we have offered to, you know, create a place for rotations to have a dumpster on, you know, on the back of our property as opposed to, you know, on the back of rotations, because they don't really have any property there. And we think that we can screen it better, you know, kind of hidden in, in our little parking area as opposed to on the back of rotations. So again, we're trying to, you know, make the back of Shippeys look as good as the front of Shippeys and the side of Shippeys, which people seem to have a favorable response to.
Yeah, Lisa, yeah, Lisa, thank you. That's a really helpful overview, and I think the planning board, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think we're all on the same page with respect to schedule and process and, and moving this along. Although, I do think as a result of the consultant's report, there's some confusion on the whole Suffolk County Health Department's septic issues. So I'm gonna ask Lisa to go into that, and maybe we can get some clarification. But I, I think with respect to moving the process along at the end of, after we get this health department stuff out of the way, or better understanding, we can hopefully accommodate you on, on process stuff. So that being said, Lisa, could you go into your memo with respect to health department and other high-level questions you had?
Say, if you could promote Lisa Rickmers as a panelist, that way we can share the screen from the table, that'd be helpful, thank you.
Yes, so I'll, one of the panelists, I'll just share my screen with some of your stuff that you're talking about, but haven't gotten to play yet. So when I, I, you know, last time in the last memo, I did request to see the septic design to understand the context of the easement, and, and so a submission that was made to Suffolk County Health Department was shared with me, and hopefully this will come through and be visible. There it is. So, what I noticed when reviewing this was a few things. And one is that the, in this box here where it has the sanitary calculations of existing versus proposed, the uses that are being submitted to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services are not matching the site plan as it's being presented to the planning board. That means that, you know, to, that, so to give a little context, this is in groundwater zone four. It, it has given how tiny the lot is, it has a mapped maximum density of ninety-nine gallons per day. It's currently, according to their calculations, at one thousand three hundred thirty-three gallons per day as a legacy use from the existing use alone. Their calculations in their, the chart here of that density flow indicate that there will be no change. And the way they get there for, for the Suffolk County Health Department is in part by taking, saying the apartments are gonna be removed, and that's gonna become restaurant storage space, and that also that all of the out, the additional seating being added, including the upstairs event space, will be seasonal dining. Outdoor seasonal dining is how it's categorized. And, or the event space is categorized as use for seasonal dining, and the, all the patio and additional bar seating is being classified as outdoor seasonal seating. This contrasts with the most recent version of the site plan. In the original version of the site plan, I looked, actually, the site plan itself still says that the ground under the supposed Beer Garden area, that's what's being called the Beer Garden, will, is, will, the existing gravel will remain. That's what the site plan shows. But the drainage plan and the renderings indicate that there'll be a finished floor grade and a brick exterior, and that really this will be a building with a retractable roof. So a building with a sunroof, which is truly finished indoor interior space, it's no longer outdoor seasonal dining. So there's that big contrast between what's being presented in the, in the plant to Suffolk County Department of Health Services and the planning board, which makes it very challenging to review this and understand what the actual intent of the proposal is and what, what the planning board is truly approving. So I do think that we really need a reconciliation so that it's, it's of these two different versions, and that the same thing needs to be presented to the planning board that is being presented to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. In addition, I'm just gonna highlight some things here on this plan, because it's, I know most people don't look at septic plans all the time. There, this, the, on the plus side, because of the upgrades, they're gonna be required to install an innovative alternative onsite wastewater treatment system, which is much better than any existing, you know, older septic system.
Yep.
This little box here is the pre-treatment area for that. And then all of these fields here show the leaching galleys. This is not a typical design, but because the groundwater is so high in this area, they have to use very shallow leaching bodies, and they have to be spaced a certain amount apart. So you can see that this easement area is very large as a result. And then also, the, these, over here, this should be noted, this is just a possible expansion area, so this wouldn't be constructed to start with. But Suffolk County does require that you show you have the capacity to expand. And I will just note that that is on, it's still village property, but it's part of the art museum area.
Or is called, yeah.
So it's, you know, you could imagine that to install this, that, that this is going to involve a significant amount of, you know, assuming this was approved by the health, the Department of Health Services, this would be very disruptive in this lot, which is okay. It just needs to be managed with the seasonally, with the construction management plan, and I think those would be things, and staging areas, and the planning board would want to consider those. Just another note is that up here in this roadway, there is a existing drainage structure that currently collects some of the runoff from the, this, it's not exactly a right-of-way, it's a driveway to the parking lot. And there is a currently existing pipe then that connects it down street, down here to the, another existing catch basin. And it's proposed that this one be removed and this pipe be removed, but we don't really have any information on what that would mean for drainage, whether the lot would still have capacity for drainage. And, and those are things that I, I think are important to know that by allowing this plan, we're not creating a different, you know, problem for the village. But my bigger concern here is that I don't, that with the design we're seeing in the site plan as opposed to what they're proposing in the septic, in the, the plan for Suffolk County Department of Health Services, I don't know that Suffolk County Health, Department of Health Services has a means by which they can permit what is shown in the site plan because of the level of density increase. And my, one of my requests in the memo was to see the actual correspondence with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services so we could ascertain how close they are to approval, and if the Suffolk County Department of Health Services is seeing this as a feasible and approvable plan, which I think could then help us have confidence in what kind of parking waiver is necessary, what kind of expansion is possible here. But without that information, I think it's very difficult to determine if this is even, what, what the right referral is. I, to me, this is the, the main issue. I feel like there are, there are, I will, I will show some other items that I highlighted in the memo and that are relevant to site plan, and they're really exclusively the purview of the planning board. But the real issue here is the septic for this use. Because I feel like all the rest we can find a solution for. I think that there are waivers for parking, there are ways to shield trash, we can handle truck. We just have to show the right paths and agree to the right processes. But this septic issue is, is one that I, that, that is a red flag and is a concern.
Yeah, very good, Lisa, thank you, that was excellent. Lisa's on, do you want to respond to that?
Sure. So, we, we started having conversations with the health department back in the early, I guess, probably spring. And Ed Armis is our engineer, he's the one that has been working and having conversations with them. We're on notice number five, which we just had, I'm looking at it, January fourteenth. We're down to basically thirteen items. They're, they're pretty generic. Like I said, one of them is the, that they're looking for SECRE from you guys. It, it's, it's kind of little stuff. I mean, I'm more than happy to share it with, with Lisa, but, you know, and the engineer's seal is blocking the clean-out sanitary profile, please revise. You know, provide buoyancy calculations for the seven hundred and fifty gallon pre-train, pre-treat tank. You know, provide the pump station calculation. These things, everything that's on this is, is really kind of easy stuff. I, I think that we've gotten to the point, and we've, part of the reason that we haven't actually done the easement meets and bounds is because we have kept kind of modifying and, and tweaking the layout of those treatment plant, of, you know, of those, of those galleys. The mayor... The mayor's concern was that he wanted them to kind of be pushed south and out of that, which is not really, she's right, it's not a right-of-way, but that driveway, he wanted them out of that so that we would not be disturbing that, or when we do actually do the construction. So we've been, we've been in constant contact with the, with the mayor, you know, showing him the revised layout every time, you know, that we revise it for the Health Department. So I think, you know, the last conversation we had, they weren't even, we're not even going to have to provide pine bearings credits, they don't seem to have an issue with our expansion. We have, you know, we have COs and plans for shippies that go back in time, long before zoning existed, that show that it was a restaurant, and I did supply the letter from Crystal that says, you know, there were in fact two apartments there for 100 years, and, and the, you know, what the occupancy of the restaurant was. So they seem to have no issue with our increase there. They do view the balcony, as well as the retractable roof, as seasonal. And they haven't actually seemed to have an issue as to whether the floor in that was gravel, or whether it was, whether it was paving, I mean, as far as I know. So, I mean, I can certainly question those things, but I don't think that that was of the issue. It is considered seasonal, the roof will open, as well as the, you know, front glass windows. I'm not really sure. Again, we need you guys to do SECRa, that's one of the items on the checklist. So, you know, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. If you want us to get Health Department approval, and they want us to get SECRa from you, I can't, I can't do both unless somebody moves forward. So that's kind of why we're looking for you to determine SECRa, as well as to let us go to a public hearing.
So one solution that was proposed was that the planning board would declare this an unlisted action and initiate a coordinated review. The coordinated review would reflect the description of the site plan that has been presented to the planning board, and the Suffolk County Department of Health Services would then be part of that, one of the involved agencies in that coordination.
Okay, as opposed to a type two?
It's not a type two, but the coordinated review is optional, so it doesn't, we do not have to, with the, but I think the planning board is opting that that is the most appropriate course, is to coordinate the reviews so that the zoning board and the Suffolk County Department of Health Services can rely on the planning board's determination.
Yeah, I think we appreciate that, you know, we've hit a wall here in moving this along, which we all would like to do, and one way to remove that obstacle would, for us to approve a motion that, as Lisa Rickmers stated, to classify this as an unlisted action. Planning board would be the lead agency on this and do the coordinated review. So, you know, that, that was something we are intending to do, or I'm intending to propose tonight for a vote. But we still have, and that, the explanation of where the Health Department is was helpful, but I think we still have an incomplete application. So while we can move this forward, we can move the SECRa issue forward and remove that obstacle, which would enable you to schedule with the zoning board and run some parallel paths here. We're hoping that that works for the applicant here.
And what are you still looking for, what are you determining as incomplete, what are you still looking for?
Well, I think we need more, well, I'm going to defer to Lisa, because she's...
Yeah, so I think that, first of all, the, the site plan is not, it still doesn't contain all the information required, and it's still, in addition to some of the things like, you know, indicating that the, that the surface is going to remain gravel, and there'll be a whole retractable enclosure as opposed to retractable roof structure, it's also missing like access easements and other things that are standardly required of site plans to under, also the, the, this, I, the, my feeling is that, like, I think there's some stuff that we haven't gotten into to discuss about the actual site plan and what the planning board wants to see in terms of the rear of the property, that accessory structure, that accessory garage storage structure. And, you know, there's, there was language that indicated two parking spots were going to be provided and a truck spot removed, but none of that is shown on the site plan. So I, I'm not able to, I don't, the planning board can't evaluate what is being proposed there. This may be not exactly an incomplete application element, but the, I did, I did look back at the, that sketch for the parking, I do see now where that extra spot was put in, but I'm still not clear as to how the, this, this parking is fully developed in this, in the village lot, and apparently is also the responsibility of the village for draining and ADA accessibility. So I'm not, I'm not entirely clear on how the, this application gets, counts this towards parking, so that's another thing that we have to consider.
Yeah, and I can interject, for zoning purposes, this wouldn't count as parking because it's not onsite parking, and it's not on parking property that they own, it would be village parking. It's a proposal that the village may do. If this goes to the zoning board and they ask for a parking waiver, this may be something that the board takes into consideration in granting that waiver, and potentially something that they could use if they make a payment in lieu of parking, but it isn't credited towards the site in terms of parking.
Right. Yeah, if I can say, I, my instincts are, number one, that the future and possible orderly expansion of shippies is a good idea, and you can run a lot of polls in the press of any newspapers of your selection, and that'll be the plurality. Number two, this is a major undertaking of the trustees, and Alex, you know more about it than most of us, of the trustees to make a contribution to the 130% expansion of the seating capacity of shippies. And it, it'll develop as to how seasonal it is, et cetera, with the roof, and they're wonderful ideas. Mr. Betts is, is a superbly imaginative man with considerable experience, and he, I'm sure the trustee, the current trustees will support him in any reasonable way. It is a major undertaking of that road in from Job's Lane, and it goes on to lots of properties for the village. It's, it's going to be a serious construction undertaking, which we can dismiss right now, but our neighbors will, it'll, it'll start with Stephenson's and everybody else, and it's, it's a lot of space, and I'm hoping that the rotations, that the wonderful people that do all the bicycles are happy with it. I'm sure, Lisa, you've reviewed it with them, and they've been there for a long time, and they're, the owner there is a very good guy, and that's, that's a great resource for the village, and it's seasonal, and it's very nice. But I think somehow we have to find a way to actively make, just with the maintenance department and the, and the village party, they've completely renovated the parking lot, as you know, they're putting in bio swells, it's a major drainage to Windmill Lane. The water table is a real issue. I'm rooting for the Department of Water, who's the supervisors for the county, but this is a big deal. This is a former swamp, which was filled in about 1895, just to get rid of seasonal flooding. It's, it's an engineering task, which you guys know about, everybody knows, it's not a secret, and the solution is a multi-party solution. So whatever we do, and thank goodness Lisa's going to focus on, and all the piece for our approval, we're just sort of the, the frontrunner for our approval of, it's a business, it falls in our jurisdiction, we want it to succeed, but it has to, it has, the rear of this place has major changes, underground and above ground, and parking is just a detail.
Yeah, and just to add to that, what I'd also like to see is a little bit more clarity on what's happening in the back third of the property with the garage and the parking and the dumpsters and other, two dumpsters and three.
And village property. It's all, it's all same property.
Yeah, and that as well. So what I would propose is, we'll make a motion to classify this as an unlisted action and move forward on that front, and the two leases can get together to clear up some of the, and close some of the questions in this memo, or improve, or show us better clarity on the design of the back third, and then we can schedule a public hearing on this application. But I think by classifying this as an unlimited action and the planning board taking SECRa responsibility, that will enable this to move forward where it hasn't, where it's been kind of stalled at this point. Good, right. Lisa's on, does that work for, does that strategy work for you?
Hello? If you're still in Mexico.
Lisa?
Uh-oh. This is too remote.
Well, while we wait for Lisa to rejoin us, I'm going to go ahead and make that move.
If Mr. Betts is run over, this is a problem.
Yeah.
Is Mr. Betts available?
I mean, if, if John Betts is on the, so we seem to have lost Lisa, if John Betts is...
No, I'm here, I'm here. I was kicked off, but I'm back on.
Okay. Did you hear what our strategy, proposed strategy is, or would you like me to repeat that?
No, I, I mean, I heard, I think I missed a little bit of it, but I heard, I heard that you were going to do the unlisted, you were going to take lead agency, so you will issue something that we can submit to the Health Department regarding that, and you're going to allow us to go to the zoning board and the architectural review board?
Right, Alex, right.
I don't...
Sorry, Lisa?
I was going to say, I'm not sure that the zoning board is appropriate yet, because it's the matter of what you're referring for, and so that information from the Department of Health Services is important to determine that.
But that doesn't preclude them from approaching the zoning, zoning board.
How does the Health Department, how does the Health Department affect our zoning board application?
Because if you're not going to be able to get the density that you want, then we're not, then there's no need for the planning, the zoning board to grant relief for the, the waiver for the parking. So I...
It's another, it's another circle.
You could, I mean, you could, I mean, you risk, you risk having to go back if the, if the number is changing.
It's another circle.
And also, you know, the...
It's a moving target.
Yeah, no, I think, I think at the end of the day, we would rather, you know, it takes a month to get on the calendar for the, for the ZBA.
Yep.
I think we would rather get in front of them sooner rather than later to make sure that, that they're not going to have a problem with what we're doing. I mean, the, the Health Department, we've been moving in a positive direction all along, and they haven't seemed to have any issues with what we're, what we're asking for in terms of density, that's not, they're, they're looking for...
Solution.
Things, yeah.
But they're, yeah, they're evaluating a density proposal that's separate from what the, that's been presented to the planning board. I mean, there's apartments in ours, and there's outdoor, there's no outdoor, there's only 10 outdoor dining seats in our proposal.
The only, the only, I mean, again, and that's, and I guess you'll have to clarify as to whether my, my logic is reasonable or not, we were asking for the, to maintain and to get the parking approval for the apartments, because we were looking towards the future, thinking that, that, you know, at the, in the future, at some point in time, when the sewer system becomes available, that we will then be able to go back and reissue, you know, reinstate those apartments, because we won't have a density issue.
It's a detail.
But if you need me to remove, remove those from the application, we can, it just means we require less parking than we're showing.
They would have to, the board would have to comment, but I don't think that, I think the board's approving the use that's permitted then in the Village of Southampton in that building. And if that is in conflict with what the approval from the Suffolk County Health Department, Department of Health Services has on record, then we have an issue. Those two things have to align.
So then we'll have to come back if and when they get the sewer system and get two additional parking spots?
Maybe.
Yeah, and also site plan approval to add apartments, presumably.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Because those apartments will have been turned into, based on your application to the Health Department, restaurant, storage, and office?
Be a bowling alley.
Okay.
I mean, from a planning perspective, it's not ideal, I prefer the apartments, but I, the septic issue has to be handled appropriately.
Yeah. And the planning board approval has to be consistent with the Health Department application, exactly.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to classify this as an unlisted action. Planning board is lead for the SECRa process.
Second.
So moved.
And to do a coordinated review.
Second.
Say again?
And to opt for a coordinated review.
Coordinated review with the trustees.
A coordinated review, exactly.
With the trustees and their agents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and are we, can we then move forward and make the application to the zoning board appeals? I will adjust the calculation before I go in removing the apartments.
Her risk?
I think we're willing to take, I think we're willing to take the risk to move forward.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's up to you.
It's up to you.
Okay, that would be great, we would love that.
And then what I'd like to propose, sorry, what I'd like to propose is the two leases get together to clear up some of those questions so that this memo, you know, some of the holes or questions we had are closed before the next time this application comes up for the planning board.
Can Alex, can Alex share emails?
I, I can. Typically, what we would ask is that any submissions be made to the building department, and we would distribute them accordingly.
Okay, sorry.
Just so that we have a record of that correspondence.
So go through Alex, and Alex will be the gatekeeper on this, that's fine.
Coordinator of the expanded review.
Exactly.
Is it, is it acceptable to have a conversation with Lisa on the phone so that we can make, because it seems like otherwise if we're just exchanging emails back and forth, that something might get lost?
If that's helpful, we can have a conference call.
We'll do our best. When you come back from Mexico, it'll be easier.
Well, I think, look, I think the point is, and Alex is correct, Alex should be involved, right? So anytime you're talking to Lisa, Alex should be on the phone, right?
Yeah, and if it's helpful, I could coordinate a conference call to the question.
No, I think that's a good suggestion, that's a smart way to do it. Great.
Does the board have, well, comment on that, or direction on that back third of the property, about how that might be revised since then, and then the question is what, when does the board want to see this again, either at work session or for public hearing?
Yeah, Lisa, can you, can you give us the latest thinking, you know, at our, our stage two approval, we suggested some design ideas might be good for the garage back there. Can you give us a review of the latest thinking on how you're going to treat that garage back there and what the plan is?
In the town...
In the what?
In the town or the property.
Is the board, did the board get copies of the renderings that we submitted?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so, you know, like I said, we, our, our plan is to paint, you know, and fix the garage building, paint it white so that it matches the stucco of shippies, and to extend kind of a thin wall, if you will, to the south that will hide the dumpster location, you know, from the rear parking lot. The, you know, again, the mayor's concept sketch of, of the, you know, the parking area, we incorporated that into our rendering, so, you know, there were going to be nine, nine spots with kind of one off on a dog leg with grass and, you know, to make it, to make it look pretty. with grass and, you know, to make it, to make it look pretty. The, the dumpster that we are offering to house for rotations would be, would also be screened off with, you know, a white fence. So, you know, we're looking, we're looking for it to be a very pretty area. The, the rendering has, you know, a hedge along the garage. And, you know, the same, the same detailing basically as the front of shippies, which technically was already approved this phase two.
Now the truck goes in and out.
Yeah, so then how does, so, how does the truck go in and out there to, like, access the dumpsters?
There, there's enough room for the, it's, if you, if you look at the, if you were looking at the, the map, there's enough room for, for the, for the truck to get in there. It's the same way it does it now. The dumpsters are back there now.
Right.
So it's the same way that he gets in and out of there now. And, you know, same concept. They're, they're in the same location. We're just trying to hide them from the general public with, you know, with that little thin wall that comes out about four, four and a half feet, whatever the width of the dumpster is.
So can, can you see that photo that's up, or that rendering rather, that's up on the screen?
Yep.
So that's, that's the concept, that little access road that is currently there that runs behind shippies and rotation stays.
Correct.
Right, and that would be access.
Correct.
And then the new parking spaces where there are 10 are what we see in the foreground there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, everybody, everybody got that? Okay.
If the.
Yeah, I thought the renderings looked great as a.
Two and a half times the seats.
Yeah, I thought that was.
It's expanding.
Any other questions, comments from board members?
It's bigger.
Good, now, Alex, you're good.
Uh, yeah, I think we just need to know if the board is gonna continue the work session or if they'd like to schedule a public hearing and if so, when.
Yeah, Lisa, did you hear that? Do you have an answer to that?
Well, I mean, you know, again, being that there's a month between us and the next, your next hearing, we would love for you to schedule a public hearing for the March 3rd. You know, I'm, I'll be back and jump right on this and, and, you know, if Alex can get us in contact, we will certainly get you everything you need. You know, again, we've, we've already notified the public that we're, you know, we're in this process and we would love to, we would love to get the public hearing on March 3rd.
Just jumping in for the board's identification. So we have a different timeframe than we do for subdivision, but we still have a timeframe nonetheless. We have 45 days from the finding of the application for a site plan complete in which we have to hold the public hearing. And from the close of that public hearing, which could be one night, could be spanned over multiple meetings, we have a 45-day span from there in which we must make a decision. So 45 and 45.
Right, but you wouldn't necessarily have to, you wouldn't have to close the public hearing.
No, and we could leave the public hearing open, as I said, for really, I think the state law or statutes or code, case law rather, sorry, says it just needs to be a reasonable time. So we could open the public hearing, take an input, we can even see some revisions. And once we close the public hearing, then the second 45-day clock starts.
There's also a 21-day mailing for a site plan.
21 days? So we have to budget for that.
Right, hence the reason that we would love to get on the mark, you know, because we could get it out and, you know, no matter what, we have a month before we can come back to you, so it would be great to spend that time with the notice.
If they want, if we have a public hearing, it's gonna be kept open until the plumbing gets settled. Because the plumbing's gonna get settled if, if we do these bins, whatever you call them. Lisa, you'll have to tell me whether, the spread out.
The leaching galleys.
Leaching, leaching galleys. If we do a lot of leaching galleys and have them, a, a big contingency for a lot of, as they say, a lot of flushes, people will be concerned about it. People are worried about the weather, I mean, the water. It's not a secret. If, if this is an expansion, a lot of people will come to the public hearing to worry about the menu and a lot of people will say, you know, I, I don't, I'm starting, I'll start, starting to go to lunch. I mean, there's all sorts of issues for the public hearing for a restaurant. And especially one that's expanding, you know, 150% for number of seats. And so you can, we'll have to hold it open. And even if we do SEACRA, it's gonna be contingent on our satisfaction with what Suffolk County water comes back. We don't just say, fine. It's, in my time on this board, the Suffolk County water has come back differently because it's an evolving technology. It is not settled. It's, it's growing all the time for the flooding.
If I may, about the leaching, is that, would that be designated, these leaching galleys for shippies only? Or could other, other businesses use them in the village and would they be paid for by tax, is it like a taxpayer thing?
No, it's not like a sewer district where, or something like that, where there could be shared services. This would be shippies and this, it would also, I mean, it's, it's, that reminds me that one of the involved agencies is the board of trustees because of the easement in this. They, you know, it, it will obviously exclude other businesses from coming and asking to use the, the lot for drainage or, or septic or, you know, a, a freeze trap in, this area of it anyway. So it would only be used for shippies. And, you know, I, I have to, like, if it were, my real concern is just that, that, that what I'm seeing on the site plan doesn't match the application. So if this, what's on the site plan, it's not seasonal outdoor dining and that's a really different calculation. It's about, it's double the calculation for regular indoor seating. So it's, it's a, it's a significant difference in density. And if this could be accommodated, and Suffolk County Department of Health Services said it was sufficient, they are really the experts, they're the ones who get to approve it, but, you know, an IA system is preferable to what they have, so.
Right, and, and just, again, we, we have been in front of the trustees, we were in front of the trustees in April. And, you know, they, they understood that we were requiring the installation of the sanitary system and in the general location of where it was gonna go. So all of their, all they're really waiting for is the final meets and bounds, you know, for the, the edges of this easement. But the, the trustees have already seen this, this concept and they, they created a resolution saying that, that it was in the interest of the village to grant the easement. So they're, they're fine with it, so to speak. So that's, just so you know.
Can I, can I ask a question? Did Suffolk County Department, typically they don't allow septic to be on land that isn't owned and fee by the applicant. I realize that part of this easement is existing. Have they commented at all on the fact that the, the proposed septic system is not on the owner's property?
Yeah, no, that, that's one of our, one of our things is that the easement is required. And they, they're, they have no issue in moving, you know, I've given them the resolution as well that, you know, the trustees are fully on board with this. So they're, they're more than happy to be moving forward. Before we would get our final, final approval, you know, we would have the easement documented, the meets and bounds, the description. It would be shown on a survey and we would file the easement with, with the village. So it's already, you know, they've seen the resolution. Again, it's one of those things where as, as they, you know, ask us to, you know, you know, we've, we've been around them a couple of times. So we had, you know, we had five leaching galleys in a row. They said, hey, make it four leaching galleys. So as it, as it moves around a little bit, we didn't wanna file the easement prematurely because then we would have to go back and modify the easement if they made us, you know, create further, further spaces between the galleys or, you know, anything like that. So the, the description of the easement is still, you know, we haven't, we haven't quite finalized that. But as soon as we finalize it, we will then give it to the village. The village will do their thing and then we'll be able, that'll be another check off of what the Suffolk County Department of Health has been asking for.
Quick question, does the health department, will they be satisfied with just an easement for the septic area? Or do you need a variance from the health department standards also?
We're, we're, yes, we're getting a variance.
Okay, and that's applied for already or?
Yes, it's already, it's already underway. That's part of, that's part of what we're doing in terms of the fact that we've, you know, we've been in front of them for a long time and we have, you know, we have this NOI, you know, notice of incomplete, where we still have a few items. And, you know, the easement is one of them, SEACRA was one of them. And then there's a couple of things that, that the engineer is still tweaking in terms of the, the design. You know, every time we come back, we come back with a couple little things.
Lisa, I know you're going to be meeting with Lisa, but I'm curious, what kind of floor are you talking about below the retractable roof? Is it gravel? Is it an outdoor thing? Or is it a finished floor, like an indoor thing?
Well, I mean, I, you know, and we can, obviously, we can ask John his preference. The, one of the, one of the questions that Lisa asked in her, in her review originally was, you know, what kind of drainage we were looking at for that area. You know, and it's currently gravel and the reason it's gravel is because we couldn't put any kind of a surface there because that would be an expansion. So it's currently gravel, but in dealing with the fire marshal and the, you know, and the village and talking about the planning of that future area, in, you know, we have a, we created a ramp coming up the side of shippies in order to give ADA compliance accessibility to shippies. And in order to make that area ADA compliant as well, we have to raise the floor of that area up to the level of the ramp. So when we were doing that, our, our thought process was that we were gonna put in, you know, some kind of pavers in that area. You know, I, I, I have to defer to, to John. I mean, again, if it makes a difference, we, you know, then we can, we can make it whatever it has to be. But whatever it is, it will have to be able to be, you know, weatherproof and waterproof because it is a retractable roof. It will be open and it could possibly get rained on. So, you know, there, the drainage structures are under there. It's already been calculated to cover that area. And, and, you know, we'll have to create the drainage to make sure that, that when the roof is open, if it's, if it's getting wet, that there's, that there's drainage in the proper, proper amount.
Just to correct a few things, that drainage, the hand that I saw was, it was not just for the, the gravel, the, the area that's marked as gravel but is, is finished in the other things that were submitted. It's actually collecting all the roof drainage from the structure. So there's a cul-de-sac system buried in gravel underneath this floor. That is where the drainage is leaking, is leaching into the ground. And they can't put that in the rear because there will be the septic in the rear and there won't be the space for putting drainage somewhere else.
And currently, there's really not any drainage to speak of. So, you know, that, that drainage underneath there is, is, it, it covers all of the roof structures and it also covered that gravel area. So the drainage that was approved in phase two, when we were in front of you a year ago, there's no change in that because that incorporated this amount of square footage for this location at the same time.
What drainage that was approved in phase two, Lisa?
In phase two, we incorporated the whole drainage plan underneath this gravel beer garden area. And, and one of Lisa's questions on the, on her first memo was, did we need to enlarge our drainage structures to accommodate this area? And Ed Armus wrote a letter explaining that he had already accommodated the, this area in his original calculations. So there's no upgrade to the drainage necessary because it's already accommodated for him first.
We, we can go back and pull those plans. My recollection is that phase two was only for the expansion of the building and there, there wasn't any improvements proposed here. But we, we have the files, so we can make those available to our consultants.
Yeah, the drain, the drain, your, your, your last consultant required drainage in that area. So that was one of the things that was designed by Ed Armus. And so we had drainage structures underneath the existing beer garden as part of phase two. And your new consultant asked whether we were needing to upgrade that drainage for, you know, for this area that's going to now have a roll cover over it. And Ed Armus said, no, it's all included in that already. That's the county done. But you can see it on the, on the old drawing.
Can I motion for the floor for St. Patrick's Day?
To your point, which I think is a good one, if we don't have health department approval when we go to a public hearing.
We're gonna hold it over.
We just have to hold it over.
Well, we ultimately could approve it subject to, to health department approval. It's the applicant's risk if they're gonna get a health department approval or not.
Would you make it a specific condition? Would you make it a general, we'll deal with it, with the facts. This is a moving target.
I think the, the issue, and it's not really our issue, but it's, it's the applicant's issue, is, as I understand, that if things change with seating with the apartments or no seating, then that would then affect the septic system and that might need to change your plans with health and that also might change your parking calculations. So I guess it's a long-winded way of saying that you might have to come back and that we should really work on having everything as uniform as possible. ZBA, health department, site plan.
So set another way.
Again, just, just by virtue of the fact that you have a 21-day mailing and noticing period and, you know, if, if you, if we have to wait until the March 3rd meeting and, you know, and we still can't get them completed, you know, you, you miss another meeting. So that's kind of why we're asking you to schedule a public hearing for, for March 3rd just because you don't have a second meeting in February. We're forced to wait that time anyway. And, and I, I don't really see the downside in asking for the public's input.
Understood.
We could do that and we could hold a, if, if the board so chooses, we could hold the public hearing open for a reasonable amount of time. And then, once we close the public hearing, there's 45 days which we can approve, approve with conditions or deny.
Right. And if, so the plan that would be in front of us, right, at that public hearing, right? Without, we, we approve subject to health department.
We can do that, yes.
And then if the health department says, no, this doesn't work.
We're back here.
All bets are off, we're back, right? Everybody understands that, right? That we're now working on a plan, new plan B.
Yep.
Okay.
C.
Or C or D, whatever, yeah, okay. Yeah, so let's, everybody good with a motion to, for a meeting on, Lisa, you want it on that, which date did you ask for?
March 3rd.
I would, I would take March 3rd.
Lisa, are you gonna be back to do the mailings this week for a March 3rd hearing?
I, I will have somebody do the mailings for me.
Okay.
Actually, they're, they're already sitting in my office. I just need the notice.
Okay, so.
Okay, because that, yeah, that only gives us about four business days to prepare and send the, the mailings, so it's tight.
Lisa, you strong enough?
I can do it. I can do it from Mexico.
Okay, just checking.
When, when will the notice be ready?
Uh, well, we'll see. We have to, we have to create it. We'll have to do that this week.
Okay, yeah, it has to go out, what, by the 10th?
By the 10th.
Okay, so, motion to.
Superbowl notice.
Motion for a public hearing on, on this application for our March 3rd. March 3rd meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
No?
No. I think it's pushing it, especially with the health department. I mean, that's a real issue.
But if the health department hasn't approved it, then we just hold, open the meeting and we still listen to public comment, right? But we're not, we just.
And we can even approve it subject to the health department. The risk is on the applicant.
But without that knowledge, that, that, you know.
Okay.
The public has to be informed that, you know, there is a big issue.
We'll tell them.
That, you know, the septic systems are going to be on village property.
Yep.
And that can affect their taxes, et cetera. The construction's going to affect their right of way. I think it's pushing it to, you know, before there's health department approval.
To Hannah's point, would any of those issues that she just mentioned not be brought up at that public? up at that public hearing?
And there, everything is fair game at the public hearing. They can all be, everything can be discussed, everything can be, you know, combed through, fleshed over.
Okay.
And again, the Health Department, it's, it's massively important, don't get me wrong, but that's between the applicant and the Health Department.
Yeah.
You know, I have a couple of projects that I'm personally working on where we've gotten the municipal approval, but we're still waiting on the Health Department for whatever reason that the Health Department chooses to concoct. So is it something that we can give great, great, ascribe great weight to? Yes. But is it something that we can choose to go ahead with our process and approval even with as a condition? We can do that. We can do that.
Okay. Hannah, yeah, Hannah, I hear you. Understood.
Okay.
And those are all valid, those are all absolutely valid considerations.
I just think it's a real issue.
Yeah.
Big issue.
Yep.
I have it circled.
Understood. So I want to just be precise on the motion, right, which is a public hearing on March 3rd. All in favor, raise your hand, aye.
And we're looking for a vote on that day?
No.
No, 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 no.
Because I am away. I've given notice of that months ago, so I'm not here.
It's just a public hearing, right? A number of things have to fall in place to, for us to vote, not the least of which is Health Department approval on this.
But I will not be able to vote.
You would not be able to vote if you're on vacation that day?
And I will also say that you will have SECRE complete by then because of the, the notice period. So I think you, you could close the hearing, you could make a decision.
Right.
Right. Bill?
And we can also leave the hearing open. That's another possibility.
Or you can start it on the 17th and you might have more things.
So, just so I see the vote for ayes, ayes, okay, all right. That's five ayes. Motion passes. Okay. Anything, any other comments, questions on shippies, the shippies application? Nope, all good. Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
John Betts, if you're on the phone, thank you. All right, let's move on. Good night.
Take care, thank you.
Approval of the minutes for the, from the December 16th meeting? Everybody, any comments on those?
I think, I think or saw them, yeah.
We'll push that. Calendar, planning board calendar. Alex, do you want to?
Yes, so the board scheduled meetings for March, for March 3rd and March 17th.
Yep.
That's as far as we've set the schedule so far for 2025. At the last meeting, the board had scheduled a desire to fill out the rest of the calendar so that people can plan ahead. I think we had shared with the board some draft meeting dates, which are typically the first and third Mondays. So planning ahead, we would like to be able to put the rest, some future meetings on the, at the calendar. It sounds like at least April 7th, based on some of the conversations we've had tonight.
Yep.
But if the board is able to adopt any future dates, that would be helpful in letting the public know when the next meetings are.
So is, what I would propose here, to set the agenda for the first and third Mondays through the end of June. So that's April 7th, April 21st, May 5th, May 19th, June 2nd and June 16th.
April 21st, Easter Monday maybe. I'm scheduling another problem, but that's all right.
Yeah.
The 21st.
Okay.
Easter's is almost as late as it can be.
Well, let's, let's schedule it for now. You okay with that?
No, it's fine.
So a, a motion to adopt those dates that I just mentioned?
Is this subject to the calendar? Because you mentioned that it's light.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So then those would be, how much notice would you give us? Generally, as you were saying, once, we thought those months, but if you prefer, then just.
Yeah, those are our scheduled meetings. We always have the right to cancel those meetings if there's nothing on the agenda. Oftentimes.
Defer them to.
Yeah, or defer. Frankly, oftentimes, we don't know what the agenda is until the Friday before, so unfortunately.
I thought you were talking about something different last time, but this is fine.
It's fine, okay. So motion for those dates that we just mentioned, second? All in favor? Aye.
Move, check, vote, move.
Alex, anything else on your list?
I think that was all that I had.
John, you good? All set? Lisa?
Lisa, pleasure to have you here.
Thank you for coming tonight. That was very good, very helpful. So appreciate your work on that one. And motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.